Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're pleased that you're here this evening. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Ospecker.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McComber.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Seliger.
Here.
Zanfordino.
Here.
The minutes from the meeting that was held on August 7th, 2017, were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. The minutes are presented, or approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
I have no correspondence, but just to note that a resolution was placed before you prior to the meeting that was not on the agenda, to place the Community Rights Charter Amendment on the general election ballot, and this is a matter of procedure that you need to have.
Very good. Thank you, Kay. We have no special recognitions this evening, so we move into lobby visitation. Kay, has anyone signed up for lobby visitation?
Yes. First, we have Jennifer Karchas.
Thank you. As most of you are aware, as we begin lobby visitation, if you have signed up, we're pleased that you did so, but we just ask that you begin by approaching the microphone and clearly stating your name and address for the record. Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Karchas, 407 North Main Street. Good evening. Tonight, I have a few remarks about the city's opportunity to file a motion to intervene with FERC. Now, I realize that this topic has been discussed quite a bit, and has been portrayed by the city as an unreasonable action to pursue, as supposedly the resulting court expense would be extreme. That is not what experts say is true. Also, to compare our situation here in Bowling Green to the city of Greene is just not a valid comparison. The city of Greene is actively pursuing a lawsuit against Nexus. Of course, pursuing a lawsuit will be expensive. We just want our city to preserve our standing if a lawsuit is warranted in the future. I have a statement that is signed by Dr. Andrew Keer, Assistant Professor at BGSU, who has six years' experience as an environmental consultant and a doctorate in political science with natural gas policy and politics as his primary research field. The statement is also signed by Terry Lodge, an environmental law attorney, and I quote, "Filing a motion to intervene, an MTI, does not obligate the city of Bowling Green to participate in any subsequent potential lawsuit. An MTI is a quick and relatively inexpensive administrative procedure whereby the party seeking the MTI asks the regulatory agency, FERC, for standing in order to be recognized as a party involved in the administrative decision-making process. An intervener has the right to participate in administrative hearings before a FERC administrative law judge, the right to request a hearing of FERC orders, and the right to seek relief of agency orders in the U.S. Circuit Courts of Appeal. Importantly, administrative solutions through FERC should be attempted first. The Natural Gas Acts of 1938 and 1978 and supporting regulations require it before matters go to the courts for remedy. As it happens, my husband and I, along with a BGSU student and several other recipients in town, are interveners in this MTI that was filed with FERC this past February. We now have standing if we want to file a lawsuit against Nexus. While this is significant, having our city file an MTI would add to our legal options in the future. Bowling Green must file an MTI so the city can put this legal tool in their toolbox for future use if need be. There's still time." Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Next is Brad Holmes.
Hi, Brad Holmes, 327A East Evers. So basically, as we heard Jennifer just say, it's important for all of us to take a stand and make sure that we have a say in what takes place in our community. With that in mind, the Bowling Green City Charter Amendment, which undoubtedly has been a prevalent topic within the city, the Board of Elections, and among the community members here in Bowling Green, I'm here to further urge the importance of placing this initiative on the upcoming November ballot. Time and time again, Mayor Edwards has reached out to various agencies and government officials for the sake of expressing the community's concerns regarding the potential risks that the post-Nexus pipeline project could, you know, present to us. And while we greatly appreciate those diligent efforts that Mayor Edwards has made, we still don't really have too many clear answers regarding these concerns, so we're diligently still seeking these answers. Since March of this year, the Bowling Green Climate Protectors have been tirelessly interacting with Bowling Green citizens to gather petition signatures for our ballot initiative. The point of this is to try to place the issue of the Community Rights to a Healthy Environment and Livable Climate Charter Amendment on the upcoming ballot. Three weeks ago today, we turned in over 1,200 signatures. Just as the 10-day holding period was coming to an end, even before the petitions were received by the Board of Elections Office, preemptive media reports were released stating that this charter initiative was going to be banned from the upcoming November ballot on the grounds that the petitions were not submitted in a timely fashion, as reported to media reps by Assistant Administrator Joe Fawcett. As a result of these damaging preemptive media reports, which still have never been entirely rescinded, and with consideration of the committee's complete certainty that these initial reports were surely a mistake, I stand here as a Bowling Green resident, BGSU student, and representative of the Bowling Green Climate Protectors, demanding that the city officials set the record straight with that incident. Additionally, moving forward with other relevant future incidences, we, the community members of Bowling Green, request that such reports and media coverage of these reports are not misrepresented by distorted information, especially considering how grave of concerns we all have towards this issue. With this, it's been recently reported that, from the Board of Elections, that we do have, that we have indeed turned in enough ballot signatures. As a result, on today's agenda is our submitted emergency resolution, which council indeed has a duty to pass for the sake of continuing this process of getting this very important issue on the November voting ballot. In doing so, these elected officials would express to their constituents, the very constituents who I talked to about this issue, the very constituents who put them into their positions of power, that not only do they support our rights, but will follow the procedure for citizens who care to amend our city's charter, as written in both the Ohio Constitution and in the Bowling Green City Charter. It's no secret that generations before mine, those who generally hold the most prominent political offices in the federal, state, and local levels, they won't be on earth as long as we will. And as a young person in today's world, I'm really concerned about whether my generation, generations to follow, will have the ability to lead healthy lives in a sustainable environment. And, I mean, especially with consideration of how a lack of political action from our most prominent offices could potentially lead to very undesirable results. With this in mind, me, along with the many other concerned people in attendance today, we have the Democratic right to modify our political structure in a way that will allow us to best address our concerns. So despite the incorrect preemptive reports that have been made regarding our initiative, and considering that we have fulfilled the community participation aspect of this effort, we continue to strive to ensure that the BG Charter Amendment does indeed make its way into the November voting ballot. In its placement on the November voting ballot, Bowling Green community members will be enabled to act on our democratic rights to alter our charter, and especially for the sake of ensuring that this political framework is designed and organized to serve the people, for the people, by the people. And to all of the young people in attendance today, I'm here to urge you that despite the constant hoops we're going to keep jumping through, and despite the continually growing fears from our world in 10, 20, 50 years, we might, we will need to continue to fight for what is just. Not necessarily for what is most convenient, not necessarily for what is most profitable, but for what will ensure that we can all flourish as healthy humans in a sustainable environment. On behalf of the Bowling Green Climate Protectors, and on behalf of the BGSU Environmental Action Group, I thank everyone who assisted in this historic effort, while we all eagerly anticipating the news of whether it makes it on the ballot or not officially. I hope that we can all be continued to a spot, to be inspired to work for the sake of all of us, because at the end of the day, most, if not all of us in this very room get our water from the same source. We all breathe the same air. We all live on property within the confines of the same city. So just please keep that in mind as this initiative develops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Just, as a very brief response, as you're very much aware, there is a clear set of election procedures that will determine whether or not the Charter Amendment goes on the ballot. I will say that the city, up to this point, has most definitely followed through to the letter of those rules and procedures, their role in this process. So any insinuation otherwise is just absolutely not accurate. The next step in the process will be council's role in the process this evening, when we'll consider a piece of legislation that will move it forward for the powers that be, that will ultimately make that decision, which, as you're also aware, is not anybody associated with the city of Bowling Green. So while I appreciate your comments, I do think that it's fair to point out that, you know, there's a very clear matter of procedure in law, and the city is working judiciously to make sure that those rules are followed, and we will continue to do so tonight. So thank you. Okay, who's next?
Ross Wiley and Peter Wiley, representing the Rapid Fire Pizza, regarding their Trex liquor application to answer questions.
Good evening. I'm Ross Wiley, and this is Peter Wiley.
Go ahead.
Oh, he's corporate. So, I mean, long story short, behind our brand is we were founded in Dayton. Our home office is in Kettering, Ohio. My uncle, his brother, he's my uncle, I'm the nephew, founded the company, as well as, you know, Hot Head Burritos. We've been developing the brands over the last few years. But Rapid Fired is a, it's a great brand. One of our biggest things is we cook pizzas in 180 seconds. It's unlimited toppings for $7.50. It's a good deal for everybody. But mostly for our liquor license is, we just want it for craft beer. It's just in a glass case, and we're talking about potentially doing a self-pour tap system, which is restricted by our strict regulations that are going on behind the scenes.
Has anybody ever heard of us? Seen signs?
Okay.
So we've been, like I said, we've been around for about two years now. We opened our 20th store last week in Eastgate, Cincinnati. So this should be number 21, and we got about five more going on by the end of the year. We've been, it's been a long time coming to get here. It took a little longer than anticipated. But as Ross mentioned, we're attracting the license in. We were looking at getting just a regular D1 in the area. There were none available at the time. There's currently none available, and there does not appear to be any coming available anytime soon. So we looked at the Trex option, and I believe you guys discussed it last week a little bit. Our primary goal is not to become a bar. We have half a million dollars invested. We'll be employing, you know, 30 people, approximately, full-time, part-time staff. Our lease is for 20 years, five years, but now free renewal. So we don't plan on going anywhere. My understanding is, a concern is that if we did go out of business or went away, you have another potential bar, or we would flip it into a bar. I have no intention of running a bar. I like, I like craft beer, but I really don't want to run a bar. So if, you know, we don't plan on going anywhere. We're backed by, I'm one of the founders of Rapid Fire Pizza. We have a certain amount of capital to back the location, just like we do in Lima. We are actually actively involved in backing, one of our main goals is to back people like Ross, who came out of Coast Guard, and put them into restaurants, not just be a manager, but to take people. So if we have a manager in this position, we want to put them in their own restaurant. It's actually one of our primary goals as our team, because we believe you get ownership, you get real sustainability in a community, and you get real, you know, great value for people, not just another part-time job. So if there's another option for us, if you have other options, we're open to them. That's our primary reason, is to be able to provide the craft beer. Bottled is generally what we do. As Ross mentioned, we're looking at a system called iPorit, which is a self-pour system. Anybody ever seen one of those? Did you like it? Maybe? I haven't tried one yet, but we really liked it because it lets us get local breweries in town. We get into a lot of areas and local breweries don't bottle or can, because it's very expensive. So if we can get draft, it gives us a little more flexibility. What's really cool about iPorit is it actually, you read the license digitally, it goes into a system, it goes on an RFID bracelet, and you can't just walk up and pour. Self-pour, you sound like, eh, drink all I want. It will actually restrict it by body weight or by alcohol per hour, so we can set all kinds of different parameters. We're looking at doing this in one of our stores in Kettering. We're looking at putting it in our Lima store. You know, full disclosure, we have not installed it in a place yet, but this is one of our options up here. It's a large restaurant for us. A lot of our restaurants are probably 500 square feet smaller, so it's not necessarily an option. We just thought it might be a good fit. Again, we personally like craft beer. We like having a beer with a pizza, but we're not hanging out. Our average time in our restaurants is probably 30 minutes, 45 on a, you know, if you're a family. So you're getting in, getting out like you wouldn't at Chipotle or Subway. Our average beer sales are 1% of our sales. We average about $20,000 a week. So, you know, you're not looking at huge amounts of either revenue or hanging out time. Hope that clarifies kind of who we are, what we're about, and why we're looking for the Trex. If you have any other questions, we're happy to hang out afterwards. We wish we were open sooner. We'd bring you some pizza, but we've still got about three weeks before we'll be open, so.
Is your concept about the same as Blaze Pizza?
It's very similar. Yep. We just use a different type oven, but we cook it, same concept. You go down the line, you pick your crust, pick your toppings, and you cook your pizza. About the time you pay for your, you know, whatever you got, and get your drink, your pizza's pretty much done. So it's a new pizza concept. It's gone really well for us, and I think everybody here will like it a lot. Lima, it's done very well with UNOH right around the corner, so.
Do all of your existing restaurants have liquor licenses?
Only two that don't currently are in Columbus, and it's a similar scenario. They just, Columbus is very difficult as far as population comes up. You don't know how to work, Ohio works on a quota system, so it's based on population. So it's not just whether we want a license, it's whether the census was updated and how many licenses are available. So in Columbus, it's extremely difficult to get, just because very dense population, more difficult. So every other one does currently have the beer.
We appreciate your interest in Bowling Green.
Hey, we think it'll be nice. We're excited.
Any other questions?
I should remember this. Where's the location that you're looking at?
It's just down the street, right by the new, is it Ashley Home?
Yes. It's 852 South Main. Right near subway and Ashley Furniture.
Should have signs up in about two weeks.
Yeah. A couple notes that I just wanted to talk about, where the, on the iPorit system, in order to get the RFID bracelet, you have to have your ID scanned, and it records the information so that you can set restrictions on weight, on age, things, or on, by hour. You can do it by, by two hours, one hour, kind of thing. So it's very, it's a really accurate system. And then on our beer selection, we shoot to have as many local craft beers as we can. Right now in Lima, we carry 11, our top 11 are from local breweries, and then the 23 others are, are as close as we can get, so.
We also have a store right on Miami University. I think one of the questions was, do we have any other college campuses? It's, if you've ever been to Oxford, it's in uptown. Sits right there next to Chipotle, if you know where that is. Right in the heart of downtown. And we've had zero incidents so far. Again, it's just a low percentage of our sales, but we, it's probably 17% of our tickets or transactions have some sort of beer associated with it. So we might not be selling a lot of it, but for folks like us who enjoy having a beer with our pizza, we, it brings, it's well worth the money, I guess, for us, for an investment, because the Trex license is significantly more expensive than a $900 D1 license. It brings in people to sit down and have a pizza.
And we put a lot of time into pairing our pizzas with certain beers. So we put it up on our menu. This beer goes with this pizza, kind of thing.
Have fun with it.
You know, in Lima, we have the UNOH campus that's probably 100 feet behind the restaurant. We have a discount that goes very well for the students, but I work-
$5 pizzas?
Yeah, it's $5 pizzas on Wednesdays, and they come in, and it's awesome. I think one of the biggest things to mention, though, about the university, that I was completely wrong in predicting, is the students don't come in and drink. They don't, they don't hang out. It's a very low percentage that we do have come in. Most of our customers are families, families of kids and stuff, and dads. We have a Chuck E. Cheese right next door, and dads come over and grab craft beer.
Literally next door, yeah.
Mr. President?
You said you had a 20-year lease?
We have a, we started with a five-year lease, and it's five years renewable, for three more years. Not a 20-year fix, but we're working, we've got a half a million dollars, and we're pretty committed to hanging out quite a while.
And I think worth noting is, our stores have a fairly low breakeven, so we're able to operate stores even if they're very, if our, you know, we don't get the people we need in, the customers, we don't, the customer traffic. But we have, we have restaurants that do considerably low sales that we wouldn't like to see, and they are profitable stores. So when it comes to, if we shut down and turn into a bar, it's not even on the radar.
We wouldn't, admittedly, I believe you still end up with the Trex license in the city, but we wouldn't be operating it, so.
Mr. President, first of all, I want to welcome you all to Bowling Green. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for being here to answer our questions, and it's always nice to have a new business interested in Bowling Green. And we welcome everyone, local people and outsiders. So welcome and thank you for being here. It sounds as though you do have a little handle on what the problem with city council is with this, though. Licenses are distributed on quotas, as you have said, and we have filled our quotas in the city of Bowling Green. And what we're being asked is to support another license coming in that exceeds the quota the state has given us. While we appreciate our students and some of the people who come to Bowling Green on weekends, who choose to imbibe in our downtown bars, it is costly for us because our law enforcement has to patrol those places, and from time to time, we do have incidents. Therefore, our community members have not clamored for more bars in town, is the way I'm putting it. I just don't hear any requests saying, gee, you're on city council, why don't you bring more bars to Bowling Green? Restaurants, yes. Oh, they want places to eat, that's for sure, and they want new things. There's no question about that. But our concern is, we know from what our administration has learned, is that it can be moved from your facility to another, to another location in Bowling Green. And frankly, my, I can only speak for myself, not for other council members, my fear is that you would end up being downtown and being one more bar. We have a lot of bars down, a lot. And we would really like to change that and have more retail downtown. So that's our predicament. It has nothing to do with your, your pizza, the great taste, taking 180 seconds to ready. I mean, that sounds like something that I'd like.
Pretty cool.
And we have no problem with people drinking a craft beer. It's, I think it has a lot to do with the fact it could be moved.
I don't think there's, I don't, in my understanding of the Ohio laws, again, you bring a Trex in, it's permanent in your area, from my understanding. So obviously, we can't control what happens, except that when we have it, so you get-
No, I mean, move, you could move from your South Main location.
Oh, I, I mean, I'll sign it, trust me. It's a half a million dollar investment in that building. I'm not moving it. I mean, there is not, for me to move a restaurant, and we have 70 hot head restaurants in our franchise, those cost a fraction of what a Rapid Fire does. For me to move a restaurant, I would have to be assured of doing four or five times the volume to make a move, and it just isn't going to happen. I mean, it costs too much to do.
Have you ever, so the questions I'm about to ask are all relative to our concerns here, not against-
No, I'm not taking personal.
So you, have you ever moved one?
We have never moved a restaurant.
A hot head or a Rapid Fire?
No, in 10 years that I've been involved.
The construction cost is so overwhelming, and the overall cost of a restaurant, that it would cost you, I mean, at least a quarter of a million to move it, without a doubt.
Okay. Have any closed?
We've had one close in Cincinnati.
In Cincinnati, a larger town?
Yeah. Yeah. Or a smaller, or Portsmouth one, I just don't miss there. It has Shawnee University. I'm not super familiar with Portsmouth, but it just opened and set records by a lot, two weeks ago.
The one that closed, was it a hot head or was it a Rapid Fire?
It was a Rapid Fire, yeah. It was an operator issue more than anything else. There's always a factor, multiple factors that go into it, but it wasn't open very long.
So you're not here a campus. You're out where, we call ourselves townies if we've lived here.
Okay. Sorry, I know an Oxford, you referred to that.
Forever. Yeah, we don't have a certain year you have to live here before you're attending, you know. You're out where the townies are more likely to buy, to drive their cars and go in and pick up a pizza, you know.
That's the majority. Lima's the best instance I have with that type of scenario, because Oxford is, their population goes up, I don't know the population here shifts, but Oxford goes up like 20,000 people when college is in and when it's out.
Our doubles.
Yeah. So they go down to like 2,500 or 5,000, and our sales drop significantly, and they said the exact same thing. All the townies come out and come into the downtown areas, because you literally can't park in Oxford to get to our restaurant. Everybody walks up here to school. So like Lima, there's, it's almost all families. I mean, yeah, the students come in, I think UNOH has 5,000 people, so it's not nearly the size of Bowling Green, but, you know, our core people are people with, you know, families, kids, working folks, like you said. Sounds like a great location for us, because, no offense, campus people, they like $5 pizzas. We like sit-down family meals.
You might want a senior citizen special.
Fair enough, so. Again, that's just based on our, our current restaurants. Do very well in that demographic. Oxford does very well, but it's a whole different ballgame over there. Our average ticket out there's $8. Our average ticket in every other restaurant's $14. So it's, if they walk in and buy one pizza, and maybe a drink, in every other restaurant, they're walking in, buying two pizzas and a drink and occasional beer, and so. That helps it all, but it sounds like the great demographic for us, right where you're talking about.
Well, not familiar with your restaurant, but I have a condo in Cincinnati. My son lives down there. I'm about 10 minutes from a Blaze Pizza, and I go there fairly often. It does tremendous business.
It does very well. They are a number-one competitor. Yeah, they, they have about 200 or so locations now.
Yeah, and you go, I mean, I make a point, I'm not going there around, you know, the Alcindor runs.
Yep. Interestingly enough, they don't seem to go to too many small towns or smaller towns. They kind of drop one in Columbus, the one in Cincinnati, and that's about it. Need to take up more time, but I'm certainly happy to answer more questions.
Are there other questions from council? Very good. Thanks for coming in. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
The last person is Laura Sanchez.
I'm going back to the topic of the Charter Amendment. I'm Laura Sanchez. I live at 202 West Reed Avenue. Like many of you, I was troubled by Charlottesville, and I've been thinking a lot about Charlottesville. If you know the story, you know that high school students organized, got signatures, and petitioned their city council, and by a vote to 4 to 3, the city council decided to rename Lee Park to Emancipation Park and to get rid of Lee Statue, and those young people were met with hatred, violence, and racism. So that was their reward for exercising their rights as citizens. And so that just bothers me a lot. And so I think of our town. In our town, young people, our college students, have worked hard for several months organizing, gathering signatures, and petitioning our town to consider an environmental bill of rights, a Charter Amendment to protect our rights. And if you are a townie, an old, an old person like me, you know that we tried this in 2013, and it was a terrible thing. It was really divisive. It was really a, kind of a hateful thing. There was a lot of disinformation and misinformation and hard campaigning against it, and it was very painful. But things have really changed since then, a lot. We know that our town is really pulling together because we know that we're being impacted by Nexus, and we're being run over by corporations, and we know that the federal government is divesting itself of trying to care for us in any meaningful way. And we know that water, our water is being threatened within a quarter of a mile of where we, we live in and breathe, and homes are being, you know, ripped apart because of this. So we know it really matters. So that's going on. And then the other thing that's going on is that we know that our mayor has recently said that he wants to be a green mayor. He wants to join other Ohio and national- He wants to join other Ohio and national mayor, you know, a mayor, a system of mayors who want to work towards environmental sustainability. And so I was really excited about that. And so I'm hoping that this time around, that one, the charter amendment gets on the ballot, it would be wonderful to be able to vote on that and to have the young people's work rewarded in that way. But then another one is that I hope that the climate is a bit different this time, and that we all get a chance to really get informed about it and think through what would be the good reasons for having a charter amendment, and, and, and that our city officials and others will actively campaign for it. So that's something I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you all for those comments. We move into our official reports. The mayor is unable to be with us this evening, but I understand, Lori, you're going to emphasize a couple of things for the mayor?
Yes, good evening. The mayor had written out his report ahead of time. It's in first person, I'll try to change all that, but if I slip into an eye, I'm not trying to, to take a mayor's spot here, just trying to deliver the remarks that he had attended for all of you this evening. The mayor notes that it was a remarkable and interesting day for science, especially for astrophysicists. And he also notes that from all reports, the weekend was hugely successful for the 51st Annual National Tractor Pull, which is the largest event of its kind in the world for truck and tractor pulling competitors, and of special import for us, a traditional American college town. All of the move-in and orient, oh, we changed topics here, sorry. I didn't get my period there. All right, so we also, as an American college town, this past weekend had our move-in, our orientation programs, and all of that came off very nicely, and we wish all of the best to our BGSU students as they start their 2017-2018 academic year. President Maisy and the mayor, along with Vice President for Student Affairs, Dr. Thomas Gibson, made the rounds on East Worcester Street in the neighborhoods on Friday afternoon. And he also notes that Rose Hess and a volunteer corps of 41 walkers from throughout the city helped to distribute 488 welcome flyers to single-family rentals on the east side. So the mayor asked that Rose be thanked for her leadership in doing so. The mayor has been asked to call to your attention the Second Annual Optimal Aging Community Fair at BGSU, which will be held on Tuesday, September 19th. I think information has been forwarded to you by Heather. If not, or if you need that information, again, we would be glad to pass that along. The very reasonable price, I think, is $10 to attend, and they have actually information contained in the program this year that's about communities and having optimal aging communities. So there's certainly some relevance to the work that we're doing in our town and our neighborhoods. The mayor wanted to let you know that he received a call this past week from the chief of the Bowling Green Regional Office of the Ohio EPA, namely Sharon Neighbors, who reported that Director of the EPA, Craig Butler and his staff in Columbus, are nearly completed with their systematic review of our concerns related to the proposed positioning of the pipeline in Middleton Township, close to the city's water treatment plant. He anticipates receiving a report soon in concert with some direct discussion with Director Butler and his staff, including Division Chief Shannon Neighbors. He also asked to underscore his thanks and appreciation to you, Daniel, for organizing a special gathering of concerned citizens at the Worcester Green and for speaking on his behalf. He's also pleased that you were joined at the event by Co-Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Mary Jane Saunders, and others, including the community co-chairs of Not in Our Town, Gary Saunders and Julie Broadwell. And lastly, he wanted to note that we have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 4 o'clock this Wednesday for the Positive Community Connection Program, and on Saturday at 4 for the Bobcat Fan Fair. And Superintendent Scroochy's here, so the mayor will be joining with you there. And that will also have the opening of the new track at the high school. Friday, we will be honoring the Black Swamp Players in celebration of 50 years of community theater in Bowling Green, and that event will take place at the Four Corners Center from 4 until 6:30. And that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Lori. Now change your hat, do you have a report from the municipal administrator's office?
Just one note, that the city is very proud to be starting a new program. It's called the Citizens Academy. And the purpose of the academy is to educate our board and commission members about city operations. We have invited those who have been more recently appointed to boards and commissions to have an opportunity to talk with the various city departments and divisions, as well as to get tours of those departments and divisions, to really understand the city operation. The point is that, you know, we ask folks, we bring them on boards and commissions, and we maybe talk to them a little bit, and all of a sudden, they're sitting at this table with, with their name tags, too, and we're asking them to make just some important decisions, often recommendations to all of you that you'll legislate, and they would ask us questions. We thought, you know, they really should be, you know, have an opportunity to be more educated. So we're really excited to spend some time with them, take them around to various facilities. All of you on council are invited to join with us if you are available and care to on September 12th at 6:30. We're going to do a meet and greet, and Heather will probably mention to you that we do have an update, a community meeting for our community action plan that same evening, but we, we think that if you can juggle your time, you can probably do both. But if not, you will have another opportunity to see those folks as well. So that completes my report this evening, subject to your questions.
Other questions for Lori? Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Well, since Lori led into this, we have the Community Action Plan, open house on September 12th. We now have flyers, if you could please take one and feel free to spread the word, we would appreciate that. It will be at the library anytime between 5 and 7. You can stop by and see some draft concepts on the plan. Also, a group of nine of us attended the Ohio Town and Gown Summit. Speaking of Oxford, I did notice rapid fire pizza downtown, and we had a, I thought, a great showing from the university and the city. And I think what's most special about this event is that you really need to network there. I mean, it's really great to hear what everybody's up to, all the partnerships, and really, I think Bowling Green really stood out there of all the partnerships, we do have all the successes. I did have a session with Paul Valdez, and it worked out really well. We spoke with Athens, and that went well. And the exciting part is that it'll be here next year, July 19th and 20th, it's a Thursday and Friday. So we will have a nice team working on that. We do have save-the-date cards that we can pass out, too. We're really going to try to get the word out there, and we really hope for some great attendance across the state of Ohio. There's even some people there from Michigan, sometimes Indiana, it just depends really what piques their interest, so I think it'll be a great way to highlight the city and university. We really hope to have some dynamic presentations, and we'll try to keep it affordable. Normally, it's around $25 a person, so I think anybody from the community can also afford that and really learn from other partnerships. I think what's neat about it, too, is that we all have our unique issues, and it's really interesting to hear, you know, our problems might not be the same as another town. For example, Oxford has a huge problem with alcohol, obviously, but theirs is so extreme. You know, for example, we visited a downtown bar there that could hold 1,000 people, one bar, 1,000 people. So just magnify their issues there compared to what we deal with, and their problem with fake IDs is huge. That's, it's a huge problem. So I think it's just good to, you know, kind of take a big-picture look at what our community is dealing with, but also there's other issues that are much more difficult and more challenging in other communities. So I think it's always good to meet with each other and really discuss that. That's it, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Heather.
Heather, I'm assuming there's going to be a link at some point when the draft comes out where people can comment online?
Yes, you know, we'll talk with that, but I'm sure there will be some sort of link, whether it's email, whether it's paper form. We try to cover all aspects of people's skills, because not everybody likes to use internet, but we definitely will have that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Heather. Parks and Recreation Director, Mizatli.
Good evening. I have just one thing. Tomorrow, we have a meeting at the Veterans Building where we're unveiling the concept plan for the new building and city parks. So someone asked me before if I was a little excited, that would be an understatement. So come out to see it. It's being held at the Veterans Building for a reason. If you've not been in there for a while, you'll understand why this is just so incredibly necessary as soon as we can. The meeting from 5 to 6 will be an informal drop-in. We'll have the plans out there, the architectural firm will be there, as well as Lori, myself, and Tim Stubbs, our facilities coordinator, so you can take a look at the big boards with the pictures, ask questions. At 6 o'clock, for those of you that like to sit and listen to people talk to you, there'll be a formal presentation by Shore Architects, and we'll obviously jump in if need be. And then also, the important part of that is if you were planning on coming to the Parks and Recreation Board meeting, that will be at a different location, because that, strangely enough, coincidentally occurs the same day. Yes, we did that intentionally. But that meeting's at 7 o'clock, also at the Veterans Building on the other side. So there is a change of location, we have gotten that information out there, but I just wanted to underscore that. And that is all that I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Kristen.
All right, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Excited to see the plans tomorrow. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Evening. Just thought you might be interested to know that the solar eclipse, they have an impact on our solar panel project. So before, before the eclipse, around 1 PM, we were making about 18 megawatts today. A little bit of cloud cover was probably dropping some of that load from the 20. And we dropped down to about 3 megawatts at 2:30, which was the bottom part of the eclipse, or the peak of the eclipse, I guess you'd say. And then by 3:30, we were back to making 18 megawatts. So it was about an 80% drop in production because of the moon. So very similar to what a cloud would do, though, as it rolled by, and actually, earlier in the day, there was a cloud that went through and did a kind of a similar drop, but it's kind of interesting to see the effect it had on the, on the output of the project. That's all I have.
How long did it stay down low?
Just briefly, I mean, you, the...
Few minutes?
The trend down was pretty linear, and then when it hit the bottom around 3 megawatts at, at 2:30, it immediately started climbing back up again. So it was, you know, as soon as, whenever the sun is, is, is out, it's going to make energy, and so just based on the amount of sunlight that's being put towards the panels.
No problem with the infrastructure when it started ramping up?
No, no. But I think because it's, it's tied into our 69 KV system, our transmission system, it can absorb that, that either increase or decrease of energy production pretty easily. So if it was on the distribution side, our customers might see a little, little bit of a, of an issue there, but given that it's basically going to everybody, because the transmission system goes to all the substations, which then goes down to the, the distribution voltage, it gets absorbed pretty easily amongst the entire...
Interesting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Questions for Brian. Thanks. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
In seven years, it'll bottom out even more, because it's a total eclipse here. Report on Fairview Avenue, we got that paved just, and Conny out just before school, got going at Conny out Elementary. We put some amalts in down today, so if you go down there and it looks a little oily, that's that product we've been using the last four or five years to extend the life of the pavement. We have striping figured on Friday, we've got some manhole adjustments to do in there, so it's starting to wrap up. We got the sheroes to put in on Fairview and Conny out, so it'll be something coming along. And then Public Works is jumping back in there to finish those ADA ramps on the, on the east side, tighten up that sidewalk we put in. The Manville Water Line is continuing and heading down the middle of Manville, it's with a trencher. And we have quite a few events coming up, Oak Grove Living History Day this Sunday, and the soccer challenge will be back in town this weekend. And the Labor Day weekend is the Boy Scout Half Marathon in 5K, and they'll be running through the downtown again this year, so if you're out that Saturday morning, that's what that's all about. So that's my report, and if you have any questions, me.
Other questions for Brian?
Thank you.
Thanks. That concludes our official reports. We move forward with the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions, hearing officer, and declaring an emergency. And I have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Police Command Officers Association and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bill. From the Committee of the House, I have a resolution to place a proposed community rights charter amendment on the general election ballot. Committee of the House, we have council committee reports this evening.
Mr. President, from Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee, we just held a public hearing to, to deal with ordinance 8618 to transfer two acres from the Ballard Business Park to Bowling Green Community Development Foundation. And actually, that was not the public hearing, but we are dealing with that in a minute. The public hearing was about the same property to, to, an ordinance amending and adopting a certain section of the ordinances regarding the use of this property for penta. So that'll come up in our legislation. Worst, worst committee report ever.
I'll clean it up.
Thank you, Bruce. Other committee reports. Okay, reading of legislation, Kay.
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3677 for first reading. Resolution to place a proposed community rights charter amendment on the general election ballot.
I move to suspend the rules and give Resolution 3677 its second and third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the rule?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for Resolution 3677.
Resolution number 3677 for second and third reading. Resolution to place a proposed community rights charter amendment on the general election ballot.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for Resolution 3677.
Second.
Excuse, we don't need an emergency clause, because it'll go into effect immediately since it's a resolution.
Okay.
Okay, so you just need to adopt.
Okay, well, I will recall that motion for the emergency clause and instead move to adopt Resolution 3677.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would emphasize that we're not making any endorsement of the proposed amendment for the city charter here. We're going to do more or less a formality to get it onto ballot, and I suspect that among the seven of us, there are some quite different feelings among the seven of us about how we feel toward the proposed amendment. But it's, no, it's, it's, it's not a, it means nothing other than we are following the process to get the amendment on the ballot.
Thank you for that clarification, Bill. Any further discussion? Kay, would you please call the rule?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for ordinance 8619.
Ordinance number 8619 for second and third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend rules and give ordinance 8619 its second and third reading.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the rule?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Seeliger?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8619.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Seliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
The motion passes, the emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8619.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 860 at second and third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for ordinance 8618.
Orderance number 8618 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of approximately 2.0 acres in the Ballard Business Park to Bowling Green Community Development Foundation in lieu of dues and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give ordinance 8618 its third reading.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seliger.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
McComber.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Seliger.
Yes.[1563.83]